Four, three, two, one.
Welcome, everybody, to the Rye Town Council meeting of August 21st, 2025. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll?
Hope, please, call the roll, and I would note that Councilman Randy Sellier is appearing remotely. Hi, Randy.
Hi, Randy.
Hello. I'm not going to talk very much tonight. It's kind of damn cold.
Okay.
But I am here, present.
Okay.
He just said present.
Present, good. Councilperson Jill Exorod.
Here.
Councilperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas Snardi.
Is absent with permission.
And supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Present. Comments from the public on non-agenda items? Do we have anybody in Facebook?
Nobody.
And nobody is commenting from our large audience. Our resolutions. We're going to skip the first one. We'll do that at the end. Resolution appointing a new Climate Smart Task Force and a Climate Smart Community Coordinator. You know, I skipped over that, didn't I? You know why I did? Because I just went down there. Yes, we'll hold that. Adoption of minutes of July 17th, 2025. If there are any additions or corrections. If not, may I have a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for catching that, Hope. Usually I skip over one every meeting, don't I?
Those are my minutes. Thank you.
Adopting, appointing a new Climate Smart Task Force and appointing Brian Sullivan to serve as the Climate Smart Community Coordinator. Debbie, would you like to just briefly tell what this is about?
Yes, so happily, the town's Sustainability Committee is being rebranded as the Climate Smart Community Task Force. And if you can look at the screen, this is our new logo. And we are very happy that to be naming Brian Mortimer Sullivan as CSC Coordinator.
Coordinator.
Yes.
Climate Smart Community Coordinator.
Yes. Exactly. And he is also going to be functioning as the co-chair of the task force, together with Councilmember Jaffe as well. And the team captains, who are the heart and soul of our semi-annual community cleanups, are going to be the members of the task force, in addition to Community Member Debbie Friedman. So those, all of those people are named in the, named in the resolution, as well as the staff members.
Let me name them. The, I'll just read the resolved clauses. Brian Mortimer Sullivan is hereby appointed as the town's CSC Coordinator. And the CSC Task Force, in addition to Brian Sullivan, are Councilmember Pamela Jaffe, Town Administrator Debbie Reisner, Town Administrative Aid Ruby Tower, Rye Town Director of Grounds and Facilities Vic Federico, and Community Members Debbie Friedman, Tracy Stora, and Kristi Young.
And just noting that Debbie, Tracy.
And Kristi represent Ry Brook, Ry, and Ryneck, respectively. And Brian actually represents Portchester.
Very good. So I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
I'll second.
Call the room, please. In fact, we don't need that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution authorizing the town to enter into a contract with public safety, public sector, HR consultants for the development and implementation of an employee handbook and policy update. Again, Debbie, you had sent a memo to the council earlier about this. It has been previously discussed. Just for the information of the public, what, why are we doing this?
Yes, this is a periodic refresh and revision, as needed, of the town's personnel manual and policies. From time to time, we've made consistent, consistently over the years, we have tweaked the personnel manual as needed. But every once in a while, the tweaks build up, and now it's time to take a really good look from front to end and make sure that we are functioning at the level of best practices and in complete compliance with local, state, and federal requirements. And that's what this is. It's been planned for a couple of years. And we've issued it, we posted an RFP. We received an overwhelming response. We had 19 submissions. We, together with Administrative Aid Ruby Tower and Administrative Office Assistant Automated Systems, Carissa Sprague, who works on Human Resources Administration with me, we reviewed all, we interviewed four finalists and checked references and have full, wholeheartedly recommended, recommend public sector HR consultants. I would add that, in addition to that, the same firm has a recommendation from our labor attorney, Vince Toomey, as well. And we are joined by Ian Loner, who will be the project lead on this project as well. Any, any questions? I think there's probably one other thing to add, and that is that we had, that this is well within our budget.
The, the, let me read the, the last where, the last two whereas is public sector HR consultants was identified as the most qualified firm. And public sector HR consultants has proposed to perform the necessary work for an amount not to exceed $6,500, which I think is fairly reasonable for this. So, did you say that Ms. Loner wants to make a presentation? He doesn't have to.
He wasn't, I don't, Ian, would you like to say hello to the folks?
Hi, everyone. I'm Ian Loner. I am the, going to be the project lead on this project if it passes through. I'm very excited. I'm working with the town of Ry. And I hope we get started, dude.
Well, we can get started as soon as we pass the resolution. How long do you think this will take?
Fantastic.
Ian, how long do you think this will take to complete?
We'll have this completed by January 1st.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Loner? Nope. Then I would suggest we call the roll, Hope.
Motion?
I'll make, oh, oh, sorry.
Did we, I thought we made a motion. We didn't?
Yeah, so I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll.
Councilperson Exorod. Councilperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Councilperson Sellier.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. Okay, Ian, you can start now. Get to work.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Sound like a plan, okay.
We look forward to working with you.
Back up to Jeff. Charlie, are we doing 35 Summit? We are. Our next and last resolution is a resolution regarding the tax cert for 35 Summit Avenue in Portchester.
Yes, so this is actually, I think this is the longest-running tax cert case that we have. It stretches back 10 years. It's been on and off the court's calendar and
Actually, it's 11 years.
11 years. So, so I'm working over the last year to try to get this, get this resolved and earlier. But we finally came to a settlement, and this covers 10 years. The refunds are, I would say, not insubstantial. So I would say the refunds are substantial, but they stretch over 11 years, or 10 years, actually, for the refunds. And the magnitude of the refunds are mostly with the village and the school district, with the school district having to pay back the most. The village refund is roughly about eighty, about $85,000. And that stretches over, that covers the 10 years, and the school district is one, about $150,000 in refunds. And it comes out, this is a, this building is a, is a multifamily building. It's an apartment building. It's a co-op. And it comes out to about $148 per unit, per year.
For the village.
For the village, okay. And we've been in communication with both the village and the school district. And we've had some further communication, last-minute communication with the village. And we're going to be getting them some more detail as to how this settlement was reached tomorrow. And it seemed to be okay with Anthony Silagato.
Okay, good. Anything to add, Charlie? No? Okay. Motion and a second, please?
Sum of one second.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Exorod.
Yes.
Councilperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Councilperson Sellier.
Yes.
And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes. And that covers our resolutions. Reports? Does the assessor have a report?
Good evening. I just wanted to give an update. The Board of Assessment Review has finished their deliberations for the summer. They will have, the new assessment rule will be out September 15th. The letters of determination will be also sent out. They should all be hitting the mailbox same day. Everyone will have 30 days to file small claims or certiorari cases with the county. Currently, our, just to give you a heads up on how we're doing with residential and commercial properties, we've seen a decrease of about 9% year over year on commercial filings. We've seen a small uptick in residential due to a couple new grievance companies that have come along. But for commercial cases, we went down about 40% in the last three years. We had about approximately 197 three years ago. We're down 118 cases now. So that's really a good step forward for the town and the villages, so. There was something that I wanted the board to know. We, there's an issue right now with a lot of the grievance companies looking for data, so they could farm, use AI to farm data to file cases against municipalities. So all across Westchester right now, the, they are going after the data for the communities. So a lot of communities are scrambling, trying to get cards and information sent out. Due to all the work that this office has done over the last 15 years, putting all our information online and making it transparent and accessible to the public, that's not an issue for us. Other communities are having problems, but for us, that's not a problem. So I just want to give the board a heads up on what's going on.
Because we're advanced digitally.
Yes, correct.
We've made it a point. When people ask what we do internally, that's one of the things. We've digitized virtually every record in the town. So thank you, Charlie. Crawford Park, are we going to have a report on Crawford Park?
Yeah, I believe we are.
We don't have to, if you don't want to. What say you, Randy?
Best not to talk.
I didn't hear. What is that?
Best not to talk.
Oh, okay.
Hi.
Hello. Why don't you introduce yourself, young lady?
My name is Candy Dama Hia. I assist Vic Federico, the grounds and facility director. And I'll be presenting the Crawford Park July report. So for, this is June, that's not July. So the report for this time is, for gross, it's $90,000 versus last year, which was $73,000. And the waived fees from last year to this year is slightly different. So last year, we had $70,000. And this year, we had $34,000. And for events, for this year, we've had 285 events. And last year, we had 261 events. And this is a breakdown of events that we've had from January all the way up to June. So it has a breakdown of private resident and non-resident events, how many public events we've had. And also, how many waived from either schools, fire department, teachers having their meetings, Board of Elections coming to our facility to use our location. And then we also have a breakdown of our programs that we've had so far here to date. And then this is our current summer series. Our next event will be on August 27th, which is for Cara Tannenbaum. She has a cooking class on August 27th at 6:00. We'll have a Zoom and also in-person class. And after that, on Saturday, August 30th, we'll have Gil Paris' second-to-last concert before October with Funk salsa.
Didn't, Debbie, did, did I see on the text that one of the concerts is at Rye Town Park? I thought I said that Gil Paris had been changed to Rye Town Park on a text. Am I incorrect?
No, I don't know anything about that. I think it, Gil Paris performs at Crawford Park. It's not scheduled for October.
I saw something in the back of my head. I figured it out. Okay. And I see we have movie nights on September 12th, October 3rd, October 24th.
Yes.
All right. I don't see Cara Tannenbaum on the, on the list here. Is that separate? How do we, how does anybody know to, to tune in?
Well, funny you should ask. So we have the upcoming event. That's the one we reported. So our summer newsletter just came out.
I'm sure.
So we have, coming up, the car show on September 21st. And our free concert series, both Crawford Park and at Rye Town Park. There's the schedule. And then we have been putting out on social media that Cara Tannenbaum is scheduled to teach her class on August 27th. And we have a registration available.
Debbie, could you append that to the agenda and on our website? I'm sure it's on the website.
It's absolutely on the website.
It's not in the agenda.
Sure. Oh, and, oh, you mean the upcoming events? Is that what you mean?
Yeah. Exactly what I mean.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Do we know if we're doing trunk or treat this year?
Now, that's another thing that, that I, yes, I got a, I got a notification of trunk or treat, too. October?
Twenty.
I think it's the 24th.
Ruby, you're on.
I think it's the 24th.
That'd be the same day as our final movie.
Our upcoming events.
I believe it's on the 24th.
Oh, Vic is here.
Yes, Vic is here. Yeah, it's the 20, it's on the 24th, Friday the 24th, in the evening. Trunk or Treat starts at 5:30, and the movie goes off at 6:30.
Hold on, what goes off at 5:30?
Trunk or Treat.
Oh, so we're doing, we are, this is not an error. We are doing both on the same night?
Correct.
Yes.
Trunk or Treat followed by movie.
Okay.
And Holiday Lights is on Saturday, December 6th.
Good. Thank you, Vic.
So we have some coming attractions that are listed. So we've talked about the car show, which is our, the first town-sponsored car show on September 21st. And it's free to the public. Any cars that want to exhibit, they can register in advance on our website, or they can use this QR code. It's $15 in advance, and it will be $20 if they walk in the day of the event. And we'll also
Drive it.
Correct. That's right. They roll in. Correct. We're very excited. We'll have trophies, food trucks. It should be a fabulous all-day event. And coming up this weekend, the town of Ry will be an exhibitor at Portchester Day. So come in, anybody who's going to Portchester Day, come and visit us. Any council members who want to come and stand with us at the booth, boy, you sure would be welcome. I remember Jill Exorod came last year. We had a great time. And of course, Supervisor was there as well, and Hope Vespia.
Hope Vespia's always there, every place, all the time.
And here's a feature on, another feature of Cara, Cara Tannenbaum's free cooking class. Registration is free, and that's free, and that is in our Crawford Community Center kitchen. And our town, we will have a booth at Portchester Middle School's back-to-school backpack giveaway this coming week. I'm very excited. We have Ruby Tower, Carissa Sprague, and Allah Abramian from the executive office have put together a whole table of things to share with the kids who come to pick up their backpacks.
Great. Thank you. That's wonderful. That's, that's a great idea. Thank you.
And we have our next Community Cleanup Day planned for October 18th in the morning, from 9:00 to 11:00. Registration is open. We will be sending out promotional materials soon. We need volunteers. Anybody who's listening, it's a great way to get your community service hours. And so far, we have three locations set up. So one is for Ryneck, one is for Ry Brook, and Portchester.
Fantastic.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Ruby. Thank you, Candy. Vic, if you're on, do you want to add anything to the Crawford report? No? Don't feel bound to. It's okay. Finance, Davy?
Just the tax receivables report that was part of the reports to the board. July 31st is, happens every year. There's two things that happen. One is that taxes that are, are liens that are in, been leaned for two years, they go to INREM. So for, as of July 31st, there's 12 new INREM properties that were added. The prior year, at the same time, there was six. So there's more INREM properties being added as of this year that have been leaned for over two years. At the same time, we also filed liens for the prior year's taxes. And there was 155 tax liens that were filed from the prior year, and it was about a little over $400,000 higher than the prior year liens filed. So our receivables are a little higher than the prior couple of years. The good side is the interest and penalties are up about $110,000 through the same time, July of '25 versus July '24. So there's more revenue from, from those sources, because we have more liens and more taxes that are, that are outstanding. We are managing that. We have adequate reserves to, to make everyone whole that we have. And our next make-whole is in October to the county. So we're in good shape.
All right. And we have two, we have two properties from the prior year, INREM, that are in court.
Correct. Right.
Both of those are commercial.
Yes.
Most of the, actually, there are only a few commercial properties on the new list. Most of them are residential. And it's not a lot of money. There are only three properties that are over $50,000. Now, let's do
Right. So we, you know, that notice has been out. We expect payments to start coming in on those properties, but, so.
Carla will be on top of it.
Yes.
All right.
That's it.
Anything else? Thank you. So I don't, Carla's not here. I don't know if she has a report. Her collections have been submitted.
Right. Carla wasn't feeling well, but she asked me to just let, well, the taxpayers in, in the town of Ry, at the Portchester School Tax, and the Blindbrook School Tax, and the Ryneck School Tax, and there's a few in Harrison Central. The bills would be mailed out hopefully by the end of next week, and people should be getting them by the first week of September.
Thank you, Hope.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Town Attorney, do you have a report?
I think you did mention the two remaining INREMs that we're still working on. And then I'm getting ready very shortly to start on the next batch, which is about 21 properties?
Twelve.
Oh, 12, okay. So the next batch will be, we'll be filing on those, I guess, within the next four or five months.
Yeah, well, you're setting a redemption date at the end of December.
Right. Those letters will be going out shortly.
Okay. Thank you. Town Clerk's report has been submitted.
Yes.
Want to say anything about it?
No, thank you.
Okay. We have done the upcoming events. Any comments from the council members? Starting with Randy. I know you don't want to say anything. Okay.
I am pleased to see everyone in the ship is sailing so smoothly.
Thank you, Randy. We'll try not to capsize. Jill?
Gosh, I hope everyone enjoys the rest of the summer. I do want to commend everybody. I thought the first, the summer newsletter looked terrific.
I thought the first, the summer newsletter looked terrific. And, you know, in, in addition to being very informative, I thought it looked really professional and well-done. And so kudos to everyone for that.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the whole staff, thank you very much.
Yeah, it was a wonderful, you know, I get, as everyone does, many, many emails, but I took pains to read it. I, I thought it was terrific, so I want to commend you. And I think that's all I'm going to say for today. Short and sweet.
Okay. Nobody's forcing you to say anything. Tam, anything for you?
Just wishing everyone a happy, can't believe it's here, Labor Day weekend. But make sure to take advantage of our town parks while they're still summer. And it's going to be seasonably nice weather, not burning hot. So go out and take walks.
I don't have any particular comments, except to, thanks to the staff doing a marvelous job and all the things that they're working on. And thank you for the council for all the cooperation. And with that, I'm going to do two things. One is a motion to enter into executive session to discuss specific personnel matters.
Some list, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll make the statement that there will be no action taken at this executive session. It is a discussion-only. And therefore, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next meeting is September 18th.
Randy, I will send you a link for the next meeting.